And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Bennett, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight?
No, we don't, Madam Mayor.
Don't see any. All right, thank you. We now have time for council and city manager and deputy city manager comment. I will ask, councilors, do you have any comments to share? All right, I have, I have a comment to share. I was delighted on Saturday night to join many, many, many people from our community who came downtown to the Salem Convention Center to watch the lighting of the tree and the arrival of Santa Claus. And I must say tremendous compliments to the staff of the Salem Convention Center. It was a classy, classy event, great fun for all. It was open to the public. There were families, there were singles, there were elderly people, there were young people. There was a wonderful choir, and I'm sorry, I don't have the name of the group that was singing. They were all festively dressed in red and white and, and music from, I think, the Salvation Army Band. Free cookies and cocoa for all the children, and they had crafts going from four o'clock on. Everyone made reindeer antlers, everyone was wearing reindeer antlers. It was a festive event. And the Salem Fire Department really pulled out all the stops and brought Santa Claus out of the heavens and right over the wall and down to light the tree. And it was a grand event for everyone. I really want to say thank you to the Salem Convention Center staff and, and those people who have, who were, anyone who was involved in that event. It's the first time they've ever done it. Great turnout, great success. And I think it will become another one of our really signature holiday events. So, kudos to the Salem Conference Center for that outstanding event. If no other comments, we're going to go on to proclamation, which Counselor Dan Clem is going to present. And this is a proclamation that is for the remembrance of Pearl Harbor. Now, Counselor Clem, I have for you the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. For those that are here in council chambers tonight and those of you who may be interested in watching this at home, December 7th, 1941, 72 years ago, Pearl Harbor was maliciously attacked and thousands of young Americans, men and women, gave their lives or were injured. And it was really the start of World War II, but it was a horrific event. And, and it was a turning point for this country in terms of how to be involved globally. And so, there are many veterans and families who are still living and still remember what it was like. Here in Salem, Oregon, Willamette University was playing University of Hawaii. The football team was there. And there are folks who live here in the Salem area that still remember what it was like to wait three weeks for the football team to come home. So, that would have been the more lighter of the news. But in fact, there are a lot of folks who are stationed overseas in harm's way, doing nothing more than their jobs in helping keep people free. So whether it's in Hawaii or Afghanistan, Iraq, it really doesn't much matter. It's, they're, they're out there, they're putting themselves in harm's way. And this Pearl Harbor, Harbor Remembrance Day proclamation is really about what happened 72 years ago and what's happening today. And so, this council has always been very generous and gracious to remember our veterans, to remember on Veterans Day, on Patriot Day. But it's important too to remember that we have a great heritage of freedom in this country. And we've helped establish that throughout the world. And so, this proclamation is for all of those who have done that and who are doing it. Whereas in 1994, the 103rd Congress of the United States of America designated December 7th each year as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day to commemorate the 1941 attack on Pearl Harbor, when more than 2,400 citizens were killed and over 1,000 were wounded. And whereas this day, December 7th, marks the 72nd anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, territory, not yet state, territory of Hawaii. And whereas this commemoration is intended to instill a greater understanding and appreciation for the selfless service of the individuals who served in the US Armed Forces during the World War II. And whereas we honor the memories of those who killed in that attack, a day that will live in infamy, and thank the survivors who fought on other fronts and carried out their duties to achieve the ultimate victory. And whereas the citizens of Oregon owe a debt to all members who served in our armed forces and those who have given their lives in service to their country and those who now fight to defend freedom. Therefore, Anna Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, does hereby call upon all citizens to observe December 7th, 2013 as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day in Oregon and encourage all Oregonians to join in this observance dated the second day of December, 2013. Anna Peterson, Mayor of Salem. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing us this time. And Mayor, thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you, Counselor Clem. That truly is an important, significant day for all of us. And I appreciate so much your eloquent remarks and, and your delivery of the proclamation. All right, we have several people that have signed up for public comment this evening. We're going to start with Taylor Perry. Is Taylor ready? And just so that you know, the red light means the end. But before that comes on, after two minutes, an amber light will show. And then you have one minute left.
Okay.
And then the red light comes on. And we do ask our guests to state their name and their address or their ward. Welcome.
Thank you. We're going to do just a little out of order. She's going to be my closer instead of my opener.
All right, that's fine. Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Angie Perry. My address is 5475 Middle Crest Court South. And I'm here as Shirley Elementary's parent teacher club president. We wanted to talk about a new reader board that we would like to have installed at our school. We feel that it will help with better communication for our school and our community, for our parents, than the board that we have right now. And I'll go through these pictures in just a moment for you. Shirley is a large elementary school in the Sprague community. We have just under 500 students with many highly involved families in the area. We also have a large community base right in our neighborhood. We have a neighborhood association whose meetings are held at our school that the new reader board would be able to let us advertise for them as well. So we would like to speak about that. I would also like to talk about the fact that the parent teacher club is funding this new board that we're getting. We are a non-for-profit organization, and the conditional permit that we need costs $2,400. And that's $2,400 that our students and our families have raised and worked very hard. And that's money that we feel as a club is better used within our school to help our students and our teachers. So we're asking if we can have that permit waived. Candelaria Elementary is in the neighborhood, excuse me, they have a similar reader board. And their reader board, based on how they are zoned, is allowed to change every eight seconds. Our board that we would get is only allowed to change once an hour. And we don't feel that that's sufficient for our families. What we were looking at is during our high-traffic times, which is nine in the morning until about 9:15, and about 3:00 to 3:45 in the afternoon, of being able to let that sign change more rapidly so that we can get more information out to our parents during our high-traffic times. So, the picture that we have here, this is a sign that we have right now. As you can see, it's a bit outdated. It's the suction cup on the stick that you bang at the thing and hope that the letters come down. Hmm, it's not fun. It takes about 20 minutes to change a sign to remove all the letters and put the new letters up. And of course, we are in Oregon, and so you have to change it once a month, and you're usually in the rain. It's significantly hard to find the parent that wants to volunteer for those things. I know I've done it. This is the new board, just a markup of what the new board would look like. We're moving it to a different section of the school as well, so that it's more visible to our families. But that's what it would look like. This is a shot, if it was the board, looking out at the parking lot into our, that's Croizen Scenic, which is right across the street from the school. So that's looking out into the neighborhood. This is taken from the corner of Croizen Scenic and Justice, and that's pointing at the school. And if I can see right about, is that, is it on? If you're looking, right about there is where the sign would be, the new sign. So as you can see, it's, I mean, we're out of leaves right now, but it's fairly obscured by those trees from that distance. This is a bit more north, and again, that's where the sign is, the little black rectangle there. So then that's again, from, far away from the street. And then this is a little bit closer. This, this curb right here, this is where a lot of our families park when they go to pick up and drop off their students. And so they're on that side of it, they would be closer, the trees wouldn't be in their way for being able to see where the sign is.
Okay, thank you. And you have another speaker?
Hello, my name is Taylor Perry. I am a third grade student at Shirley Elementary. I live at 5475 Middle Crest Court South. My school is important to me because it is a great place to learn and make new friends. Also, my school means a lot to me because of my wonderful teacher, Mrs. James. I am here at this meeting because I want to talk to you about the electronic reader board we would like to have. The new board will let parents keep track of our school calendar of events. The, the board we have now is very old. Parents have to struggle putting letters up. The new board will make it easier for everyone. Candelaria Elementary has an electronic reader board that gets to change every eight seconds. Our board can only change once every hour. I want our reader board to change with Candelaria's board. Shirley Elementary parents and students work very hard raising money for our teachers and school. Our PTC raises money for smart boards, field trips, classroom supplies, and many other things. It is not fair that we have to pay $2,400 for a permit because that is money we could be using in our school. In conclusion, I hope we can have an electronic reader board for our school that can change screens like Candelaria's and not have to use all fundraiser money for a permit. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Taylor. We appreciate your testimony. And we always ask the people who testify to wait a moment and to see if any of the councilors have questions of them. Are there questions? Counselor Clem and then Counselor Benars.
Thank you for both of you coming down. That was very good, Taylor. And, is it Angie Perry? You had mentioned something about a reader board either just down the street or a little ways away from the school, also in a residential neighborhood?
No, that school is zoned commercially.
But it's in a residential...
It is in a neighborhood, built, yes, homes on all four sides of it, fairly similar to the way Shirley is set up. It just happened to be zoned differently there.
Sure. And this, Shirley is zoned something other than commercial, I take it.
Right.
Would the parents' club allow if, if a more frequent message were able to be displayed? A school could get out more announcements other than the note in the bag and...
Correct, yes.
That kind of thing. So it would help the school as well in terms of...
Very much, yes.
If something happened there, the school could react a lot faster, at least by letting parents know.
Exactly. The board that we have now has six lines on it that we change once a month. And it's hard to try and get just six events for an entire month on there. And then if we do need to change it, then it's trying to track down a parent that's willing to stand out there and, you know, take off a couple of lines to put on a few new ones and stuff, so...
So if a neighborhood association meeting was happening, say, once a month on a particular night at a particular time, that could be on there as well?
That could definitely be on there, yeah. Right now, it's not because we choose to put our PTC meeting event time on there instead. So, yeah, we don't, we just don't have the room for it right now. But, but with the new board, we absolutely would.
If, and just one last question, if I could, Madam Mayor. The, the message is that you would like to see on there, they wouldn't, would they need to change eight seconds for like 24 hours a day, or would it just sort of during those timeframes of high volume?
Yeah, the high-traffic times, there could potentially be during the middle of the day so that we could get the morning kinders when they leave and possibly the afternoon kinders when they get there. And I believe those times are 11:30 and 1 o'clock. That would be another high-traffic time that would be nice to do. But again, by 3:45, parents have picked up all students, and there would be no reason for it to change after that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you both.
My comment was actually after, for Taylor. I'm very impressed that you stood up in front of us all and didn't turn several shades of pink. I've seen so many adults do the same thing and get very embarrassed. So maybe in some future, you'll, you'll be a politician or something, then, council, yeah. Somebody could sit out there in the public and not have a problem speaking. So, you've been going to the school now for three years? And you, you like all the events that they've got going at the school then? So there's always something happening. Can you tell me about a few of the events that you've done?
Um, not really.
Okay, I can go with that.
PTC meetings and carnival.
So what does PTC stand for again?
Parent Teacher Club.
Ah, okay, I didn't know that. That's a relation. Okay, good, that's good. No, that's the only question I had for you. But anyway, thank you for coming and talking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, Brad Swank, followed by Rich Harcourt.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Brad Swank. I live at 1045 Cross Street Southeast, which is just south of Bush Park. It's the south edge of Bush Park. In going through the materials for your meeting today, one of the things that I noticed is that one of the items under 7A talks about purchases approved administratively October 28th, 2013 through November 20th, 2013. The information reports are normally items that are not discussed in these meetings very much. In looking at this particular information report, I noticed that on page two of six, category one, item 12, Eco Northwest is being paid $70,000 for consulting services for economic opportunities analysis and housing needs analysis. I know that Eco Northwest is a consulting firm out of Portland that does a number of different projects around the state, political and economic nature. This is not very specific. I was just hoping that at some point tonight, it would possible for somebody to explain what you're hoping to get out of, what they're consulting on and if there's a takeaway that the city hopes to get from that consulting service. Just a question. And after any questions, I can answer them.
Are there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. And Rich Harcourt. And I would like to preface that Rich Harcourt is, wears two hats, and probably more than that in this community. He is Chair of the Salem Public Arts Commission. And prior to that and continuing, he is the President of the Oregon Artist Series Foundation. And so he'll be talking a little bit about both items as he addresses the information report that's in our binder from the Salem Public Arts Commission. And I've asked him to speak for a few minutes about the work of the commission and the collaboration that's going on. So, welcome, Mr. Harcourt.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm, I'm pleased that the mayor has set the agenda for this three-minute discussion, Madam Mayor. I watch these lights very closely.
Good.
I just wanted to just remind everyone, you have in your packet under item, Agenda Item Number 7 Bravo, you have the actual annual report that we, all the commissions and advisory boards send in to you on a regular basis. In this case, though, I want to just add my two minutes, or perhaps three minutes, to let you know that after three years of doing a lot of the yeoman work necessary, the embryonic stage with the, the whole commission process, we are now, I think, ready to face the future and the strategic plans for all that we want to do in this community to bring more public art. It was just three years ago, we literally started working, produced the policy guidelines, excuse me, the bylaws. So we are now in this frame to move forward and do some exciting activities. I wanted to just very quickly mention the thanks to all the staff members from the city who have done so much to help us during this time. Glenn Gross right now, and Cindy, who's not here, but who backstops all of us. We have a lot of great support from all of you. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing plenty of members who have given us so much support already. Very quickly, Mayor Peterson referred to this public-private effort that we've put together. The Sculpture Garden is a perfect example of the public and private efforts, the work of the Urban Renewal Agency, John, the, the work of Pierre Fernandez and his whole group there, because we couldn't put a piece of sculpture up unless we know that it meets the qualities and requirements to work. So it really is a true public-private sector relationship to bring that kind of a project together. We, very briefly, let's think about the future. Glenn and I have talked about the fact that we would love to see sometime over the next few months, or earlier if possible, a work session with the councilors for the purpose of really thinking where we want to go strategically with placing public art, more public art in the downtown area. So I hope we would be able to go forward with that. I see that wonderful yellow light going right now, and that makes me say, if there are any questions on the part of the mayor or the councilors, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Well, I have one question right off the bat. Do you remember off the top of your head, how many sculptures have been placed now in the, at the Convention Center Sculpture Court since the Oregon Artist Series Foundation began working with the city to place art and make that truly a garden as opposed to a open space?
We have eight, we have seven right now. What's important, though, is one of them is owned by the, the city. Another one is borrowed from one source, another one is, was purchased by the Urban Renewal Agency. Another was purchased by the Salem Conference Center, Convention Center, sorry. So when you start adding up, we have seven pieces in there right now from five or six different jurisdictions working together, the public sector and the private sector. So it's, coming together is an exciting project. And now the question is, how do we bring that out to the streets of downtown Salem?
Absolutely. Councilors, Laura Tesler.
Thank you. I just wanted to first of all say that you've done really wonderful work. And my comments are not meant to say that there hasn't been really good work done, and I do appreciate it. I had the opportunity to visit Klamath Falls recently. Have you been to Klamath Falls?
Not for about seven or eight years now.
Klamath Falls has about 20 different murals in it. And they're all really nice murals. They're mostly historic in nature. They're scattered all over the downtown. They're kept up, taken care of. Some of them are very large. I'd really, really like to see some more murals. I'd like to see you guys dig your teeth into the sign code and merge that together and work on that and get us some more murals. Because I love the Elsinore mural. I think it's a great mural. But we need to have more murals. I mean, we need to have lots more murals. Vancouver, Washington, they got a lot of murals. They have murals on overpasses. I mean, they, they, it was amazing. I was amazed at how many murals they had in Vancouver, Washington. So I, we would, I would really like to see that. We got a lot of space downtown. That's the best form, in my opinion, that's one of the best forms of public art there is, is a mural, a well-done mural.
Absolutely agree, and I thank you, so we can see who, who's going to be first on our, our expanded mural project situation.
Well, you know, after I'm done, on December 31st of 2013, I thought maybe I'd sign up for the Art Commission.
I think we have a volunteer for that project.
I think so.
That's great. Well, it is, you are absolutely on, on sync on this one, counselor. It makes so much sense to bring more murals down. We do have to meet the requirements. And everybody knows what's in Chapter 15 of our codes that require that. But I think we have to think seriously about trying to figure out how to bring more murals. We have a lot of buildings, not all of them are historic buildings where you can't touch them. But there are other buildings that we can work with owners for the purpose, are you listening, Carol? Owners that would like to see the opportunity for, for more murals on their buildings or the backs of their buildings.
Lovely. Counselor Benars.
First off, I want to agree with Counselor Tesler. I have been to so many different communities, and it's one of the things that you see the history being brought out through the murals that tell of the local community. And, and I just finished a book called Willamette Landings, and it's, it was a wonderful book about all the different landings along the Willamette River and the communities and the history that was in this area, this specific area, as the, as the people arrived. My question actually for you is, is, so is the idea that we're going to take some of that art from the art garden, that art sculpture court, and move it around town? Or is it to get extra on, on other street corners, or now we have those ball bouts and such?
One of the things we've already been involved with, when I say "we," we're talking about the Art Commission as well as the Oregon Artist Series Foundation. But we've already worked with Pierre Fernandez's group and some of his people to actually designate, tell us where there are places where we can put, place actual sculpture that meets the criteria necessary, such as the fact that there's no space underneath it and all the other things. So we've already designated, not designated, we have guidelines now from Public Works for 11 locations in the downtown area where it could be appropriate, meeting the requirements of transportation, meeting all those factors that fall into it. So we're starting to do that process, and that's where we think we've got to get the, all of us together, including the downtown organizations that are involved right now, the council, and come up with a way of saying, okay, strategically, how do we want to do it?
If you want to have some fun, go down to the sculpture area at nighttime and watch the reflection of that beautiful blue and green tree off the side of the, I think, is it the ice cube?
The cube.
Yeah, that's right. Which, by the way, is Bruce West, it's untitled, and it's owned by the city. It's been here since 1972. So that's the exciting thing about it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down this evening and for all the work that you're doing on behalf of the city for the arts.
Thank you all, Madam Mayor, for moving us forward.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't see anyone else signed up. Was there anyone else who did want to testify during the public comment time? All right, Counselor Bennett, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.3C by Bennett, or by the mayor, and 3.3D by Bennett.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of 3.3C and 3.3D. Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Excuse me. All right, we'll move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings. Would the recorder please introduce those?
Madam Mayor, 4A is a continuation of deliberations, and 4B is an order. So I don't have any scripts to read tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion on 4A?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the council continue deliberations on ordinance bill number 15-11 for six months.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move the, move the ordinance for another six month, a continuation for another six months. Is there discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Bennett?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, this is, as you recall, the unsolicited written materials ordinance. We've had some success in continuing to discuss this with the various distributors of unsolicited written materials, and I think it continues to have mixed-to-good results. We would like to continue to work with, with this issue and see if we can hit perfect results at some point in the future.
Fine, thank you. All right, call, yes, Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, there must be still some complaints coming in. I think, I'm trying to understand why we're, again, holding off on this. But, and I'll respect Counselor Bennett's leadership in this issue because it's been important. I do want to state for the record that I am pleased with the great turnaround that particularly the statesman journalism... the Statesman Journal has done. The papers are on the front porches, they're not lying, at least in my ward, so I can't speak for councillor Bennett's ward or other wards, but they have made great strides. I think with getting the correct phone number on the bags will help. I'm just, I want to proceed or hold on for another six months if it doesn't unduly burden staff, because community enhancement, neighborhood enhancement, it still has this issue of responding to those complaints. So I'm okay with that if it's, Casey, if it's not...
Yes, we can handle that, the staff.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and again, there's probably good reason for continuing to keep this item for discussion, but I am pleased with getting a paper on the front door, not necessarily at my house, but where there are empty homes or rentals. The neighborhoods are looking better from my perspective.
Thank you. All right. Councillor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know in my ward, we've had kind of mixed results with it, but generally, it's been very positive, and I really do appreciate especially the Statesman Journal's effort to correct this issue. I would say what we see in my ward is it's like three steps forward, one step back, so it's very good. I mean, I think we're really getting there, and I think it's just a matter of time, and we'll be there, it'll be really good for a while. Then issues come up. I don't know if they're calling the city or if they're calling the Statesman Journal, or they just complain to me because I'm their city councillor, I'm not sure which it is, but it's generally getting better. And so that's why I'm really good with just continuing for another six months and see how it goes, because I have expectations that it will just continue to get better from here.
Good. All right. There's a motion on the floor. It was moved by councillor Bennett and seconded by councillor Dickey. And we'll move to the question, and I believe that the motion is to continue the item for another six months. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And the second item, I believe councillor Benars, do you have a motion to present?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. I would like to make a motion to approve the order number 2013-04-sm.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Benars and seconded by councillor Clem to adopt the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Councillor Benars, do you have discussion?
Not a whole lot, other than this should have occurred a couple of weeks ago, I guess.
All right.
That's it.
All right. So the question is on the floor, is there any other discussion from councillors? All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, special orders of business. We have two items that were pulled from the consent calendar, and the first of those is mine, 3.3C, has to do with Garmin AT and their ground lease at Salem Municipal Airport. The reason that I asked for this to be pulled, and just for a moment to be able to speak about it, was that today I had the pleasure, along with our urban development director, John Wales, and with Doug Rux, the deputy director of urban development, to actually visit Garmin at the time that the Business Oregon and the State of Oregon, the governor's office, were present. And we were there really to signify and celebrate that Garmin is expanding both their footprint, so they'll be building a new building on their site at the Salem Airport, and they have plans to employ about 65 new engineers. That's a significant employee increase for that company and for this community. Those are engineering jobs are well above family wage job criteria, and they're the kinds of jobs that really bring stability in the community, because people generally who go to work at a company like Garmin AT and aviation and avionics are very specialized, and they tend to stay in those positions and stay in the community, and so it's a highly valuable expansion. And this expansion is brought about also in part by a special program that the State of Oregon and the governor's office have, the Oregon Business Expansion Program. And through that program, there are cash incentives that are provided to the company, and I'm confident that those cash incentives in a situation with a company as well-renowned and as solid as Garmin are an investment in the community and an investment in the future. So I just wanted to share my joy, and I can't wait to tour as that building is going up and as those new jobs are being created. I wonder if our director, John Wales, would like to say a few words about that program or about Garmin, or the work that you've all worked so hard, and thank you for all the work you've been doing with Garmin, and also to Doug Rux, the work that you've done to really solidify that company's position here in Salem has been remarkable.
Sure.
Mr. Wales?
Be happy to. For the record, John Wales, Urban Development. Yes, we were very pleased that, for the celebration at the ceremony today, this is a project that we've been working, and the state has been working with Garmin for several years on, actually, when they first came and talked to us about a desire to expand. Their decision wasn't just for Salem, they were considering other areas out of state that had other economic advantages to locate there as well. So the entire incentive package that the city was able to put together, the mayor eloquently spoke about, the enterprise zone that the city offered, and the council approved earlier this year about the incentives that we gave at the airport, as well as far as driveway and accommodating their needs to expand. And then the Oregon Expansion Program, which I understand is one of the first, the third, the third one that has been given in the state of Oregon, so this is a big deal. It was just under half a million dollars that they qualified for, and the state was there to give them their check today in front of their employees, which was a very celebratory moment. But because of that whole package, and because this was important to Salem, and as the mayor described, we're very pleased that they decided to choose Salem. This is the third time they've expanded here, and we're very glad to have them on the airport and in our community as well.
Thank you very much. A $14 million expansion is an exciting expansion for Salem and for the outline community as well. A lot of jobs will be created with that. All right. So I would like to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Peterson, seconded by councillor Benars, to move the staff recommendation to allow the city manager to execute the amendment to the ground lease for the Salem Municipal Airport with Garmin. Are there questions by councillors? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Yes, you are an airport supporter, we know that. We are too. All right. Councillor Bennett, did you have an item, item D?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation regarding FWX Inc., which does business here, is Footwear Express' expansion lease in the Chameca Parkade.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Bennett and seconded by councillor Tesler. Is there discussion? Councillor Bennett?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I want to just take an opportunity to, number one, say how excited we are that, number one, the city doesn't need this space in the Chameca Parkade, and with that in mind, is able to lease additional space to Footwear Express. It gives me a chance, too, to underscore the amount of investment by businesses in downtown, which is beginning to pick up, spurred on in part by leveraging Urban Renewal Agency funds. Over the past 16 months, the Urban Development Department has issued 51 Toolbox Grants as financial incentives to preserve and renovate existing downtown buildings, and also to retain, recruit, and expand downtown businesses. For this time period, the city's investment of $925,000 has encouraged total project costs of $4.8 million in our downtown area by leveraging private capital with public funds. Most recently, businesses such as Sugar Sugar on State Street has expanded, and plans are underway for Glamour Boutique in the Metropolitan on Liberty Street, and obviously for Footwear Express to expand. This has been a really visible and, I think, positive result of both city and private investment downtown, and an indication, I think, of the improving economy as well as the vibrancy of downtown and its support by property owners, businesses, and visitors.
All right. Are there questions or comments by any of the other councillors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the motion, to the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We have no unfinished business tonight. We'll move to the information reports. And I do draw your attention, there are three in your packet. One is the purchases, purchases approved administratively. The second, we've had a report from Mr. Harcourt on the Public Arts Commission, and then the third one has to do with the City of Salem electric vehicle charging stations. Councillor Bennett, did you have a comment?
I had a question, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Gross. I wanted to follow up on Mr. Swank's questions regarding the project that's been undertaken or we've contracted with Echo Northwest. If you could explain what's going on there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Glenn Gross, interim community development director. City council will recall that a few years ago, we participated in a regional study with Marion County, Polk County, and the city of Kaiser to analyze land needs for employment and housing over the urban growth boundary as a whole. That study was concluded, it made some preliminary findings, but those findings were based on the UGB as a whole, not Salem-specific. The purpose of these two studies is to do a Salem-specific analysis of our needs for housing, different types of housing, and our land needs for employment, what kinds of employment lands and so forth. This is a very important beginning of developing policy direction for such things as future zone change requests, for changes to multifamily, or zone changes from industrial land to commercial land. This will provide a policy basis eventually to give us direction in that regard. It will provide a basis for us to review and comment on potential proposals coming forward in the future from the city of Kaiser for a possible urban growth boundary expansion. And what excites the planners mostly is it's the beginning of the first steps to putting us in a position to update what is now over 30 years old, our comprehensive plan, and so very important beginning to that. It's appropriate to start this as we wind down the UDC project and we begin the next phase, and so that's where we're at. And this was subject to city council work sessions. We've had work sessions with the planning commission. We presented it as part of the budget hearings last time around, and it was incorporated into our adopted budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Tesler?
You missed that it was a council goal, too.
And it's a council goal, yes, ma'am.
I think it was mine.
Thank you.
That's how I remember.
There you go. All right. Did councillor Nanki have a question on item 7C?
Well, and I was actually going to ask a similar question that councillor Bennett did, but I talked to Robert Chandler from Public Works today and Judy Johnson in regards to the electric vehicle charging stations and kind of where we are compared to everyone else, and essentially, we're in the same boat as everyone else who was previously engaged with the organization that filed for bankruptcy and sold all their equipment to a car charging group. So we're just waiting. I just wanted to get some sideline questions answered, and it doesn't sound like anyone else had a question to ask.
Okay. So you're good. All right. That's fine. Thank you very much. All right. We'll proceed to the ordinances. We have no first reading, and we have a second reading. Would the city recorder like to take the roll call?
Yes, I'll first read the ordinance bill, and then I'll take roll call. Ordinance bill number 3213 relating to historic preservation and procedures for land use applications and legislative land use proposals, establishing city council authority to initiate city council review of major historic design review decisions for new construction, amending SRC 20, I'm sorry, 230.005, 300.100, and 300.620. Councillor Bennett?
Aye.
Councillor Tesler?
Aye.
Councillor Nanki?
Aye.
Councillor Clausen?
Aye.
Councillor Dickey?
Aye.
Councillor Thomas is absent. Councillor Benars?
Aye.
Councillor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. And public comment, I see that Mr. Ron Sturba is signed up for public comment.
My name is Ron Sturba, I live at 520th Street Northeast, and I have been in the newspaper, if you didn't get to see, on November the 15th, what happened to be about LED lighting, and I think maybe you've probably seen the LED lighting and how bright it is. So tonight, I want to get into a little bit of a learning process here. I also want to tell you, I'm for a dark sky, I don't like the proliferation of light in our city or anywhere. Light needs to be where it should be, and not in people's homes, should be on the street. So if you want to be more educated, go to darksky.org. It's an excellent website to go ahead and learn by. And then my next item here, we're going to learn about the Kelvin scale. A lot of people don't know much about the lighting, but go to your home computer and your browser and look up, or I should say, put in their Kelvin scale and learn about lighting. What we're going to talk about here is the effects of lighting in the range, and so the colors that we're going to deal with here and the reflectability is something that I can describe by my cartoon here, only because I didn't have the permission to take copyrighted material and put on. But it's very easily done. If you look at a campfire and take a look at the base, and you see the red color, and then the orange color in the middle, and then the white and the blue color at the top, well, the red at the bottom is the 1,200 Kelvin scale. It's the lower part. And as we get up into the orange lights, we get into the home lighting, which is around the 2,800. Our streetlights in Salem are amber in color, and they're in around the 2,000 Kelvin scale. As we build up to the white light, we get into the 6,000, 5,000, and 6,000 Kelvin range, and that's what these new lights appear to be. And they reflect moisture. You wouldn't drive your car in fog because of the reflectability. When you're out skiing, night skiing on the slopes, the goggles you wear are orange in color. There's a reason for that. So what I'm saying is, there are some excellent places in Salem to take a look at lighting. You can look at the parking lot in front of Target that has amber, and go across the street to Lancaster Mall, and has the white, and the intersections of 14th Street and State, 17th and Center have excellent lighting by the city's Public Works Department. And I think that we should consider taking a look at this by doing a neighborhood project and voting on the type of lighting before we do a wholesale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Sturba? All right, thank you. We appreciate you coming down and talking with us tonight. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the chambers that had wanted to sign up and didn't get a chance to sign up for comment? All right, we're going to... We're going to proceed then to the new business, and I have an item, which is a reconsideration of council's decision to grant a vehicle-for-hire agency license to Ken Levesey. And if you remember, this was discussed at the council meeting of November 4th. And I would like to introduce my motion for reconsideration of that decision by saying that I was not able to read all of the material that it presented to us, particularly that report that did arrive later in the day, on the day of consideration. And that is what specifically has caused me to bring forward this item. Now, I need to ask our city attorney. So, I make a motion, and then, need a second, and then I can speak to my motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So, I move that we reconsider the decision.
Second.
Thank you. I've moved, and Councilor Bennett has seconded the motion. As far as further discussion, if all of you remember, there was testimony that evening, both from the applicant, and from the applicant's attorney, and from others who came forward. One of the things that I particularly noted during that testimony and in the reports that I did have a chance to read, was that there seemed to be a little bit of a confusion on the part of the applicant as to whether he should or should not have been operating a taxi without the license. There seemed to be miscommunication or misunderstanding, I think, because of the way he presented material with regard to his parole officer's directions to him and requirements. At the end of the hearing, I did vote to support him receiving the vehicle-for-hire license. But following the meeting, I sat here in the chambers alone and read back through the documents and the testimony that we had been presented with during the hearing and had had a chance to look at beforehand, and had a chance then to read this supplemental report, which, by the way, is five pages long. After that consideration and the time that I took to reflect, I decided that my vote had been wrong. I decided that I should have voted against his receiving a license to operate the company for these reasons. I did not believe that Ken Levesey would operate in a truthful and forthright manner because he did not demonstrate those traits when he was appealing to us for his license. I found him to be evasive. I found him to be convoluted in his discussion with us. I think so is to purposely mislead us. Furthermore, the information that's contained in the supplemental report is very, very strong, very strongly in favor of his not receiving that license. I speak specifically to the facts and findings, his criminal history, the false statements that have been made by the applicant, the applicant's continuation to behave in an untrustworthy manner even while he was under probation, and certainly his conviction of sex offender as a sex offender would be troublesome, I think, to anyone who would be riding in any cab owned by his company. Because I believe that it's the owner of the company that sets the tone for the business. And if we can't trust the owner of the company, I'm not certain that we could trust anyone else in the company reporting to him. So, for those reasons, I felt strongly that I should bring this back to council and appeal to my fellow councilors to look again at these documents and consider again why we even have a system to license a person who owns a taxicab company. We do this to protect the public. We do this because that vulnerable person who gets into that cab, and it could be a child, because taxicabs are used to transport children. It could be a person with a disability. It could be a person who is very ill. It could be a person who's elderly and uncertain of how to protect themselves. And for those reasons, I think that having a taxicab company owned by a man with quite a string of offenses, not the dispassionate offense against someone you never see or know, against individuals that he personally saw and knew and had access to. And I think that's a much different kind of an offense than the offense that might be perpetrated against, you know, a stranger that no one knows if you do something, you know, illegally through the mail or in some other way. And so, I feel very strongly that we need to look at this again. We need to consider what our standards are as a city for licensing, why we have this license, and if we have this license, why we have it, and why it's our duty to uphold this license. And to hold this license as one that is one of privilege and one that the people in our community can look to and say, "All right, I can trust that company," because the city has done its part, has done its due diligence, and has done its part to protect the public. And with that, other councilors might have questions or comments. Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two issues. Was Mr. Levesey made aware that we were going to be voting on a reconsideration this evening?
I don't know what that procedure is.
No, there's no notice requirement for a motion for reconsideration.
Okay. And then, is it the mayor's intention to actually make an alternate motion after we actually vote whether or not to reconsider?
That's right.
Okay. Because most of your testimony was actually for that second one, rather than... Most of the time, we don't have a lot of discussion on the front end.
Right.
Most people defer to at least hearing what the man has to say.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Clem?
Is there a, excuse me, is there a requirement or a procedure where we notify someone if we're reconsidering a motion made for or against their request?
No, the hearing is closed, so the motion for reconsideration doesn't require notice to any party. If you choose to reconsider it, you have two, you have different options. One, you can make a motion to change your decision right now with no continuation of the hearing. Or you can move to reopen the hearing. We can provide notice to the parties. You don't have to allow new testimony. You can just do your deliberations at that continued hearing. Or, as I said, you could do your revote tonight.
Hey, I'm not comfortable voting without him being aware of it. I am comfortable with reopening the hearing. But I think as a citizen, he should have a right to understand the proceedings that may or may not affect him. So, I'm okay with reopening. I think your motion to reconsider would lead you to, but I would not be comfortable voting without him knowing about it. So, that would require reopening. Is that correct?
Yes. If you opt to reconsider, you could make a next motion to reopen the hearing. You can either do it to allow public testimony or just to continue deliberations.
Okay. Councilor Nanki, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask that similar in regards to just the motion, then if we actually wanted to have him available and knowing what was going on would be to reopen the public hearing for deliberation purposes only.
If we, if you opt to reopen the hearing even for purposes of deliberations, obviously, we would give notice to everyone who participated.
Correct. But we would restrict it then just to deliberations and not actually...
That's your option.
Yeah.
All right. So, I have a motion on the floor for reconsideration. And so, we vote on that before we vote on, unless there's an amendment to that.
That's correct. Yes.
All right. So, my understanding is that we will vote, the motion that's on the floor is the motion to reconsider our decision. And if that motion passes, then we will make the decision about how to proceed. If that motion fails, then we don't proceed any further. All right. Okay. So, the motion on the floor is to proceed with the reconsideration of the granting of the license for the company. All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the one nay is Rich Clausen. All right. The motion passes. Thank you. And now, we will vote on the reconsideration.
You'll need to make a motion first.
You guide us for that?
You need to make a motion.
I mean, yeah, we have to have a motion on that first. And can you guide me in the specific wording of that type of motion?
Basically, the same notice that's required for the original appeal hearing. Is that the question, counselor?
Whether or not we actually reopen something for the purpose of deliberating, how long would that be out if we wanted to? I'm assuming we have to make that to a date certain.
That's correct. And so, you don't need to select the date. We can select the date. Staff can select it if you'd like, or you're welcome to set it now. Once we have a date selected, we'll send out notice to the parties, and the notice will state whether it'll just be for deliberations or whether it'll be for testimony, depending on what your motion states.
Okay. Counselor Clem?
I move that council reopen the hearing for the purpose of conducting deliberations only and date to be set by staff and notice be given to Mr. Levesey.
Second.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Benars to reopen the hearing at a date set by staff and to receive further test, no, not to receive further testimony, to...
To conduct deliberations.
Conduct the deliberations. Counselor Clausen?
Just one quick question. If it's just deliberations, does he have a rebuttal chance, or is that...
No. No party, no outside party will allow to speak. There's no testimony received.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And then, I also want to double-check this. Is this a quasi-judicial action then at this point?
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. It is a quasi-judicial action. It's not land use, but it does affect the rights of the parties. So, please do not conduct ex-party contacts. If you get any contacts, please let them know that you can't talk about the issue. And if you do happen to get something that you read or whatnot, make sure you disclose it, and we'll have to reopen the hearing for that limited purpose if that were to occur.
One further question. Now, you have, so everyone knows what we've got in hand. We have these various reports, and the mayor, I thought, spoke very well to the arrival, the late arrival of a report later in the day that may not have been as available to councilors just because of timing. Is all of that then in council's hands and clearly identified, or will you send us a packet of the materials that we can look at in order to deliberate?
Staff will be happy to do that. It's also available on the City Council website under the November 4th meeting agenda. If you click on that item, you can open those reports there on the website, and I will, staff will send all the information we have that's in the record already out to all the councilors.
Great. I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Tesler?
I just want to ask one more. If we vote yes on this, this person has no rebuttal, the way that this is structured?
The only reason anyone would have rebuttal is if there's arguments made by the public, they could rebut those arguments. In this case, you're not going to allow anyone to testify. You're just going to conduct deliberations. So, it's just discussion amongst councilors in the decision-making process. So, no, there would be no opportunity for rebuttal.
Okay.
All right. The motion on the floor is to proceed with the reconsideration specified by Counselor Clem's motion. Did you want to restate your motion?
Just that it's a reopening of the public hearing for purposes of conducting deliberations only and that Mr. Levesey be notified.
All right.
Period.
All right. Thank you. All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We have a counselor's item, and that's 10.2A, electronic signs. Counselor Benars, would you like to introduce your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a motion that I would like to put forth. I move to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the Salem Revise Code that will permit institutional uses within residential zones to have electronic display signs that can change the display up to once every eight seconds. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Benars and seconded by Counselor Clem. Is there discussion? Counselor Benars?
If I may. I think we've had two people tonight who have given excellent testimony and a good background to why we are here where we are. My intent isn't to make earth-shattering decisions that are going to affect everybody in the City of Salem when it comes to signs in eight seconds. The whole intent was to help schools and information and children. And most importantly, I guess, in some respects, not only was information, but most importantly, was that $2,400 that was being spent on a permit rather than on children. And I, for those basic reasons, I said, if I can live with other ways to get around this, but I really think this is a good way, if we can figure out something within the code to allow these signs to change their display every eight seconds rather than once every hour. In my ward, Candelaria Grade School sits at the top. My kids went to the school, and the school faces right onto, I think it's Hanson. And there is no buffer. There's nothing. If you go down to Shirley, as it was well shown in the pictures, you've got the school that's hidden behind a whole buffer of large maple trees. Obviously, at this point, they've lost their leaves at this point. But in essence, both Shirley and Candelaria are the same, same kind of layout. We have a school in a neighborhood. It just happens to be that Candelaria is in a PE or a public education zone, and Shirley happens to be sitting on a piece of RS or single residential zone. And because of that, you can't have this over in Shirley. There are, what is it, 72 schools in this community. 22 of the 72 schools in this community reside or are sitting on property that's in a residential zoning of some sort. Either that or multifamily, but it's still residential zoning. So, there are other schools that might be faced with the same thing. If you've got a school that is so enthusiastic to come up with a lot of money, if the parents are coming together, if the community comes together to get that money, I want to see it go to the best good. And to me, the best good would be to go back to the children, not to pay a permit to get the sign, unconditional use. So, for that reason, I would like to support this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, certainly as a courtesy, I'll support your motion tonight. I do think that we need to be very cognizant of unintended consequences, that this, while we talk about schools, we're talking about all public institutions, including churches, a whole range of others that we went through in a really exhaustive review of the sign code. So, I'm hoping that as part of the process here, we send Amy back out to some of the neighborhood groups to help us through, you know, kind of what's going on here. The other is, I want to understand if your motion does cover the $2,400 fee. I'm not sure I caught it. If it does, great. I just want to make sure that you've mentioned it. Are you also then, part of your motion is to forgive or whatever you would do on the $2,400 fee?
The idea is if you have the revision to the code, if we revise it, there is going to be no need for it to go through a conditional use.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
And we save the money.
Okay.
Because it's one of the exceptions that's within the code.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In listening to some of the testimony this evening, I had time and place that was described would seem to be fitting for that versus a 24-hour, unregulated, eight-second flash all night long to drive people crazy. So, not knowing what other, who all is in the institution class?
Mostly, it's schools and churches that would be located in a residential zone. So, I think we're basically talking about those. It might be a membership organization as well, but those would probably be fairly rare.
With, if this motion passes, then, does staff have enough direction to try to craft an amendment? Because we've given very little direction in regards to time and place restriction. So, I'm just trying to see what we would get back if this were to pass versus trying to put some more time boards on, time-of-day type stuff potentially.
Well, as I understand the motion, if it passes, I think the direction is clear as far as what kind of amendment we're supposed to put together. I do appreciate Counselor Bennett's comment about...
I do appreciate Counselor Bennett's comment about the need to engage the public, particularly the neighborhood associations, in terms of, you know, what kind of level of support there may or may not be for this amendment. I think that is an important step. But the only other thing I would just add, and I don't, not, certainly not arguing with the councilor's motion here, but this would be the only, if we proceeded with this, this would be the only case where an electronic display sign would be allowed without a conditional use permit. That is, you know, that's pretty much a requirement everywhere. So we might want to look at, as far as consistency with the rest of the code, how that works or not.
Just one last follow-up. So right now, the direction that staff has and the direction staff would pursue would just be unlimited eight seconds and put that amendment language together?
We'd put that amendment language together and take it out and engage the public with it.
But there would be no other sideboarding or anything else that would be strictly-
Not unless the council directs us to.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I definitely see the intent with the specific instance of Shirley Elementary. I'm very concerned about the broader impact of what this might do to us for churches located in the middle of a neighborhood, you know, if they just leave their sign going every eight seconds, flipping through in the middle of the night. That can get really annoying, even on a low lumen sign. If you're the next-door neighbor or four houses down, it's still going to be a red glow or a whatever color glow. So I'm really concerned about that. I mean, at a minimum, I'd want to say during daylight hours, that could happen and not during dusk or morning or whatever. But I'm also pretty concerned about the non, or taking away the requirement for a conditional use permit because of the fact that the conditional use permit gives a whole lot of, a broad view of looking at the sign. Because I know, because I actually work at the school district and I've seen some of these sign things come through, while these ones are very well-intentioned, there are some obnoxious signs that you can get. And they can technically meet the code, but the conditional use review helps to filter a lot of that stuff out, I think. I've never gone through it myself, but I'm concerned about those two aspects of this right now.
Counselor Benars, I'm sorry. Counselor Benars was before Counselor Tesler, and then Counselor Clem at the end. All right. Counselor Benars?
Thank you. I've had considerable conversations with our sign inspector, Amy Dixon. I absolutely agree with you. I didn't want a garish sign out there. I wanted to limit the amount of lumens that come off a sign. And I think there are already some requirements into that area. Limit the hours, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, something to that effect, so that you know that it's not going on in the evening, it's not going on predominantly. I mean, right now, it's getting dark at 4:00, 4:30, so daylight hours with-
More light.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about when people come in for concerts or something, if there's an announcement that they wanted to make. But nothing that was going to run 24 hours a day. Nothing with, there's the Baptist Church downtown that has the very bright sign that comes to mind. I don't want anything that bright at all. What I was trying to do was get something that was dim. And I'd be happy, I really would be happy if we could attack this from a different point of view, if it didn't necessarily mean that we revised the sign code. I'm just trying to get away from having the school or having the parents and having those kids forego that money to do what, in essence, another community, Candelaria or wherever else in our communities, had done the same thing. Those schools, if I got that right, did Candelaria have to go through a permitting process? Conditional use?
Thank you for asking, and I need to, I misspoke. And I should know better to talk about the sign code with Amy Dixon sitting behind me because she's going to catch me every time. Amy tells me that it's only the residential zones that require a conditional use permit.
Right. Okay. So that clarifies that. I'm just trying to do the right thing for our community and our schools. So if we can put some requirements, whether it's time or lumens or anything, we can direct staff to go in with that within this revision, I'd be all for it.
All right. Counselor Tesler?
Well, these kind of things always seem like they're kind of simple, and they never are. And I can remember last, maybe four years ago, when the church wanted a sign, and wow. I mean, we had probably five, six meetings with lots of people and people on the council upset and everybody else. You know, I mean, signs are just complicated. And you never can make anybody happy with a sign. And the other thing I'd like to say is, my kid goes to parish, and they don't have a sign. What they do is they call you when they have messages that they want you to know. And you get a call and you press a button and it says, there's a parent-teacher club or whatever. So, I mean, I think there's other ways to communicate with people that don't involve a sign. They may even be cheaper than a sign, and you don't need a permit for that. And parish does it. And parish is, you know, not in a, as tony a neighborhood, shall we say, but, you know, they get the message across, and they don't have a reader board. And there's other schools that do this too. So I just might suggest there's more ways to communicate the message. And then they could save themselves a whole lot of money because then they wouldn't need a reader board at all. And they save the permit fee. So I just might suggest that as well. That's all.
Counselor Clausen?
Thank you. I think back to the conditional use permit in the residential zone, the other institutions is what I'm concerned about, as well as the other schools that might come up with issues that aren't as well-hidden and aren't as well sheltered from the neighborhood. I'm really concerned about this one.
Yeah.
I don't, I guess I don't mind having the conversation, but I'm concerned about it. And I'm concerned about removing the conditional use permit. And I do understand completely, $2,400 from a parent-teacher organization is a pain. There's no doubt about that. But the side impacts, I don't know if it could be tied to a use. I'm just throwing this out there for staff to think about. I don't know. But anyway, that's what I'm, I am worried.
Counselor Benars, and then Counselor Clem. I'm not sure which of you had your hand up first.
So I could, I would support a substitute motion that said that we approved to waive the conditional use permit. School goes through the conditional use, they still get their sign. We're not taking money and putting it towards taking the kids' money. You're right, Counselor Clausen. I mean, I'm open for a discussion, and that's really why I'm coming with this whole thing, is I need, I'd like to get this accomplished. I'm just trying to figure out what's the vehicle to do it with.
Counselor Clem?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council frequently will entertain thoughts about waiving fees, and it really is a hard issue for us to debate here on the floor, particularly for just one user. I don't know that we ever have. I think the real issue is, and I just wanted to chime in here about the concerns. At the church in West Salem, which is also a school, we implemented the once-an-hour internally-lit reader board in a, because it's zoned residential. And it's worked very, very well. So I would submit to you, while you have concerns about it, that there are neighborhoods where the character of the neighborhood, the screening involved, it does work. So rather than this blanket, we could be creating havoc in our neighborhoods, we certainly don't want to turn our neighborhoods into neon-light districts. I think we all have that concern. But there are neighborhoods where it does work, and going more frequently than an hour would better serve the school, regardless of the conditional use fees. I think we need to focus on what works for that neighborhood. And I think at the end of it all, if any of the owners of the signs could comment, they'd rather have the ability to change it frequently during times of high volume, not necessarily 24 hours a day, every eight seconds. So I would highly support this motion, so we could have a creative discussion about where it does work in neighborhoods and really fashion the code in a manner that allows the messaging to be done at a time, or at least in volumes of time, rather than a 24-hour period. But I really think we should have the discussion, because this is going to come up more and more and more. The telephone system works great, but it, the school district, as I best understand, it reserves those telephone messages for only school-critical events, not for parent-teacher club and other kinds of community events. Each one of these schools is a community center. So if the school district is willing to let them be used for community centers, I think that'd be able to communicate with the entire public, not just who's on the autodia list, so.
All right. I think just about every counselor wants to speak again, and I have to admit, not knowing exactly which hands went up where, I'm going to start over here. Counselor Dickey had her hand up, and then I'll just rotate down that way. Counselor Dickey?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion just for the purpose of seeing what staff can come back with and continuing this discussion. When I first read this in preparation for this meeting, I thought, it's crazy that you've got a school that doesn't have a reader board. Schools in my neighborhoods do have those reader boards that seem to be in or near residential areas, but maybe it happens to be the property the school is sitting on is not, you know, zoned a specific way. And I think this is a discussion that we definitely need to have. We may not, it may not look like what we're talking about tonight, once we start exploring the options. But I think a school should be, you know, at least be able to explore this possibility of doing this. I just think that it's interesting to me that we have schools that are zoned differently, and maybe not the school itself, but just because of where they're located. And I think that, you know, to Counselor Tesler's comment about the phone calling, we get those too, and it's great. In fact, we, even the McKay Park Master Plan, McKay High School sent out a call to all of its students to get people to come to that, the planning meeting. So that was great, and the schools do use those in really creative ways. But I also know that communication sometimes needs to take many, many forms, so people understand what's happening and when it's happening. No matter what you do, someone will always say, I didn't get the message. But as many ways possible as you can get the message out when it's appropriate, I think, is a good thing. So I think this is worth exploring, and like Counselor Clem said, we'll be seeing this again for other things will pop up. So I think it's definitely worth discussing what options lay ahead of us.
All right. Counselor Clausen?
I'll defer to Counselor Nanki's question. He was headed the same direction as I was.
All right. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Knowing signs are land use, and there's notification requirements, and the motion still on the table is for staff to just draft an amendment that says, change it to eight seconds, is there not another option where either a couple of councilors could talk with staff to look at potential options or have staff bring options back, knowing that that's kind of interesting in a land use matter? But the maker of the motion discussed, you know, willingness to have some time constraints or, and none of that's there. So how do we get to that place, rather than staff writing this amendment, going out and talking to people, bringing it back in, and then have us butcher it up and do something different with it?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yes, certainly.
There's a couple of different ways you can do it. I mean, if you want staff to go out and talk to the neighborhoods and try to get more specifics on what would be more palatable to the neighborhoods, we could come back and present that discussion to you. We could also prepare an amendment, do the same thing and come back. We can also come back to present you different options and say, okay, do you want to try a variance sort of thing? Or with the different restrictions on conditional use, no conditional use, and you can kind of pick and choose.
That'd actually be, I think, a better motion is to have those pieces brought in. What would an amendment look like? What would a variance process look like? What are just some options?
I think the motion's broad enough now that we probably have the ability to do that.
Even though it says to bring back an amendment?
Prepare an amendment. So we're in the process of preparing when we come back with you with options.
Okay.
If you want to amend the motion, that's fine, too.
As long as that, you know, stated intent, which it is now, for the record, I'm good to go with that.
Counselor Bennett, did you have a comment or a question?
Just a question. I wanted to just sort of understand, under the current ordinance, can the school apply for a conditional use, given their zoning? I mean, could Shirley come in right now with their $2,400, and we would deliberate solely on the Shirley school request? Is there, or is there a block in the way of them getting to do that?
Amy Dixon, planner, City of Salem, they could apply right now for a conditional use for an electronic sign, with the stipulation that it can only change once per hour. So that way, the community, you know-
But we can't, as one of the conditions then, we can't say they can change every five minutes, 10 minutes, eight seconds. We cannot do that condition.
That's correct. The time is not a variable.
Okay.
Under the current code.
If you went to a variance, then you would need to have, could you do it under?
It's not a variable standard.
So that standard has to go.
That's correct. Or the requirement that it's not a variable standard.
Okay. Okay, I get it. So could there be, I'm just curious, as we talk about this then, could there be a condition, a variance on this thing? Make it a variable for, solely for public schools, for public schools? That that time limit is a variable for public schools?
If I can address that, there's, part of the sign code, it's regulating speech. So the more you drill down to it and say, only this type of speaker can do this, then you have more constitutional issues.
So churches would come to us with the ACLU and say, you've impinged on my right to-
Or I would, because I want to have a legal sign that-
They're doing a PTO, and I'm, I can't do my potluck? Is that what you're-
Anyone in that zone could potentially do it. So if we say, in this zone, only schools-
So everyone could come in and ask for the variable speed. If we just change the variable speed-
That's correct.
Everyone could ask, but we would be able to look at each condition.
Technically, it would go to the hearing's officer, but yes.
Yeah. Well, I'm just trying to figure out how to say this a lot more simply than going digging around in that sign code and doing a lot of violence to the sign code itself. What little thing could you do that would give these folks a chance to come in and make their case? Or the church up the street from me to come in and make its case as well?
I think that's-
For time, just for time.
I think that's something that obviously staff can look at. I think this is a very, very broad motion, so it gives us the opportunity to try to find the most efficient way to get where folks are most comfortable.
Okay. I'm just taking that the motion, though, actually is settled on eight seconds. I hear that you have interpreted it pretty broadly, but I want to make sure that that's okay. I mean, you're real comfortable you can do all this.
Well, I'm not the one doing it, so you should refer to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Clem?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'm not necessarily convinced that it's broad enough to get all this. No deference to the city attorney, but I would move that council would direct staff to come back with an ordinance for institutional uses in residential areas for electronic signs, and also to include a neighborhood involvement process for their comment on that ordinance for either a number of messages per hour or up to a maximum of message change once every eight seconds.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Bennett to direct staff to come back with the draft of an ordinance with the features that were outlined by Counselor Clem in his motion. Any further discussion? Counselor Benars?
Did you want to be specific in reference to lumens or time of day? Leave that up to staff in the report. Okay, I'm good.
All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.